Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. We're going to call the City Council to order. And at this time, we will start with prayer. If we can have Pastor Jay Kim from First Presbyterian Church of Kankakee come forward and lead us.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are here tonight in your presence. We are not here by accident. We are here by your plan and your provision. Your plan did for us to be here a long time ago. So be with us, Lord. Be with each members of Kankakee City Council. Be with them. Provide them with your power, wisdom, any intellectual power. So they can make this city better. They can make the city of Kankakee the best place in the U.S. You are with us tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
The City Council, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we're going to move into item number four, and that is public comments. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matter which are currently under legal review will not be permitted. First up is Mr. Robert Ellington Snipes.
To the mayor, to the members of the City Council, though it may not be known, I am still a resident of the city of Kankakee. And I still reside at 1371 East Maple Street, and I am still the county commissioner and the county board member of District 18. I had to go into the area where we undoubtedly heard that there was a shooting today, and thank God that the city has a camera up. However, just a few notes. And if we can help you anywhere in the county, we will. And if we have to reach out to the state, we will. But there's some things that I think that we can do to kind of eliminate. It's not going to be nice and pretty, but it's something that we need to do in order to protect the safety. I looked at the kids out there playing today, and God forbid if one of them come into a gunfire or somebody, the one that don't know how to handle gun, or don't have a FOI card or a gun permit because they either probably got a felony, or they're too young to basically even have any of the above. So my first suggestion is Operation Turn Down the Violence by turning up the lights. We need as many lights in this area now that we have, like on the west side, down on Lower River View. We need to light up these areas, these dark areas, so people can now see or whatever. And the way we can do that is utilize some of that opera money to put these lights into these areas or whatever. And if we have to put up cameras on certain streets where we know that it's a heavy crime area, let's do that. The next thing, I need to see if we can also have landlords subsidize housing. That means that these dollars are backed by federal dollars. Now, I know that the marijuana is legal in the state of Illinois, but it's not legal if you are in a federal subsidized housing because federal law rules. So therefore, if you are caught, you are automatically put out because it's illegal for the federal. So I'm saying that to say this, these individuals who, some of these guys that's living with these girls that are not on the lease. If these individuals go and check those leases and find out that it's more than the kids and those individuals that are staying in those apartments, they can put out. And if we have to, unfortunately, I hate to break up families, but those kids are primary safety. So if DCSS has to get involved, we need to use all the power and forces that we have in order to stop this morat of individuals coming in. They're not, I worked in the penitentiary, they're not even related to those gangs. They're just making up gangs named 900 Street Club, You and My Club, and all this other bull crap. But we have to take our community back, and we cannot. It's not snitching, it's reporting. The other thing that I'm looking at here is if we can, yeah, I say since federal monies and subsidized housing, we need to take the necessary efforts to say, if you're housing these people with guns, then you're getting out. We're going to protect the kids. But you're going to get out, because we're tired of this garbage happening in our community. And so finally, anyone that's caught, anybody, whether it's a parent or whether it's these individuals, ladies or men, that's renting these subsidized houses or whether if they're caught with, and you know that this person shouldn't have a gun, and they're in there in your house, we need to now go after you all, or wherever as far as that's concerned, and get you out of these. Start finding them. Y'all got the city code for everything else. Let's start saying, now, we need to put this in place that if you come up in here, you know that they got guns, and they're bringing them into your homes, and you're not saying nothing, then we coming after you, because enough is enough. So I'm going to represent the 18th district, but I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to take all of us together to clean this mess up. And I understand we want folks to live in our community, but we want people that's going to be law-abiding, peace-keeping. And if they're not going to do it, then we're going to start asking these landlords to check and look at your leases to make sure if these people are not supposed to be up in there, that they're out. God bless you and good night.
Next is to Mika Crutcher.
Good evening, Mayor Curtis and City Council members. I'm coming because a few weeks ago, we had a mom and a son that were homeless. They had actually been sleeping in a park. They had been sleeping on the side of Gas and Wash. And I was called to come to the scene to see if I could assist them. And so I called one of the local hotels, Economy Inn, and they refused to, and I was paying for it, they refused to house this mother and her child. And so to me, that is number one discrimination, because they said they do not rent to people with kids. But you'll allow them to rent to prostitutes and people that are out there doing drugs. That's a problem. And so I just want to make the city aware, if you're not aware, now you are. And what are you going to do about that? Because that is discrimination. I was trying to take a mom off the streets and her child, and they refused to rent to them. So that's number one. Number two, this city is in despair and under destruction right now with all this gang violence, the shootings. Past administration was held accountable. And I just want to know what this administration is going to do. Have you reached out to the families that have been affected by the gun violence? What is your plan? Because nothing is being said, and I feel like nothing is being done. And we know where the crime is happening at. It is in our community. This whole city is our community. But I am asking that this city, the mayor and this City Council, put some things in place so that we can try to end this. Start holding these parents accountable. We have to. That's where it starts. It starts with the parents. So I am asking the administration to, maybe by the next meeting, have a plan set up on what you will do to tackle this violence that's going on in our city. Thank you.
Next up is Verlaine Jordan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The same thing with the violence. I was here tonight because I just heard through social media about the shooting today, and it just alarmed me from the fact that we've had these school lockdowns, soft lockdowns with kids, because this stuff is happening in broad daylight. We know that gun violence is all over America, but in Kankakee, for such a small town, we're seeing more and more. What I'm just asking is if we ever think about, and maybe this might be in place, but looking at our aldermen and seeing if we have watch groups come up with a round table so we can sit down and discuss, you know, not just aldermen, but the community, the people that live here. What are your suggestions? What should we do in our own community to make it safe? And that might be watch groups. That might be a watch group that's for four blocks, six blocks. You have names. Who lives where? And just start somewhere. I'd just like to see something going on, something happening that involves the community as well as the city where we sit down and discuss solutions. No one has the solution. If we all, it wouldn't be happening. I don't think any of us want gunshots, you know, in the middle of the day or at night, anytime. But I think as a community, we have to pull together as one and sit down and discuss the matter and come up with liable solutions of something that will work, that'll make sense, that we're all working together, and it might mean that we put some pressure on some families to tell on Junior and whoever who has weapons in your house, and you know this. But if we, as a community, we have to first start it, because if we sit at home and just wait for somebody else to do it, it'll never happen. So I'd like to have something that's going on with the City Council, with the community involved, and to come up with one process with many solutions and try and see if we can handle on this gun situation. Thank you.
Next up is Travis Miller.
Good evening. I stand here to talk about a spill that is going on in Kankakee that involves buckets of blood that continues to stain our streets. So many young people are losing their lives. So many innocent children, neighbors, community members are torn in between this gun violence. It was this administration and those who sit on this council from all different parts of this community. It was previous police department or the current police department. We all know who it was that held the past administration responsible for every bullet that went off, for every gunshot, for every single thing. Even when there was a flood in the Kankakee River, it was the past administration's fault. You had made a statement under the last administration as it relates to 9:30 at night. You raised your hand, and you said, "I want to talk about the gun violence." It seems then that everybody was just so ready to fight gun violence. Now it seems as if we have turned a deaf ear to what's going on. And it's too much business as usual. We show up in our suits and ties, business as usual. We go to Merchant Street Fest, and we go to downtown Kankakee, and we having events. Downtown Kankakee, we having events. But on the north side of Kankakee, they having different kinds of events called funerals and homegoings and memorial services. And the First Wars, and the Fifth Wars, and the Seventh Wars. We are having events that we don't want to have. We're having to bury children and bury men and bury fathers. This administration says they are going to do something about the gun violence. More police is not the answer. We can put as many police officers, we can take as many pictures, we can have all of that. But if they don't even reside in the town that they are getting a paycheck in, I have a problem with that. You can go to Bradley, and you can see police trucks in their driveways, Bourbon A, Chicago. But in Kankakee, you don't see one police car in the neighborhoods where people live because they work here, and they get their check, and they go somewhere else. I am not saying this administration is not doing anything. I have seen you at events. But there has to be more, because you all expected more from the past administration. You all did. Y'all advocated, y'all voted, y'all campaigned that it would be a better Kankakee, and still buckets and buckets and buckets of blood keep pouring. When will it stop? Just like Verlaine said, we need to come to the table as a community and discuss what's going on. It should not be your agenda. It shouldn't be your agenda. It shouldn't be your agenda. It should be one agenda. On the same page, we are too divided. Buckets of blood, and we Republicans and Democrats. Buckets of blood, and we are on the riverfront, and we only worry about the river and downtown Kankakee, and we don't give a damn on what's going on on the First War and Fifth War while children are being shot down. A father lost his life in the 700 block of Greenwood. Just recently, shots fired on Osborne. This is just within the last 72 hours. Buckets of blood. What are we going to do, Kankakee? Y'all are the elected officials. Y'all the one that swore to hold the oath. What are we going to do? Let's stop the business as usual, and let's get to work and get on the same page. Republicans, Democrats, incoming, whoever you want to be, we need to be on the same page. Our children, lives matter, and they are looking and watching for us. If y'all can't get the job done, get out the way.
Before we move on to item five roll call, I will say, if you'd like to stick around, we are going to be talking about this after we do the city business here.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have this special privilege if I may come in.
Yes, you can come forward.
Theodas Palace, 547 South Osborne. That was my house today. I'm a landlord in this city. My house got shot up today, and I was with the officers. Verlaine Jordan, Mr. Miller, I truly appreciate your words. And to this community, when individuals start seeing things and report it, there's nothing Chief Kidwell can go. I've been with the organization in this community for 47 years. Mr. Miller just said the young man who just got killed at the 700 block of Greenwood. That was one of my parents. That was one of my parents. Have a child play on that 12U football team. The young man just got killed this other morning, also have another child for Eastside Junior Football League. So it's close to our organization. But let me just say this. And to people, I left my house approximately 2 o'clock today. Individuals had taken down their cameras. Why you take down the cameras? Police cannot arrest. They can't have the evidence or anything. But let's look at the Facebook. Everybody want to deal with social media. If my tenants had incorporated and met with the police, I see Dr. Walters here. This thing is over about maybe a student that's in part of District 111. Not going to call no names or the ages. But if maybe they had alerted the police department, maybe the shooting at my house would have been avoided. And yes, I know the law. I'm going to get a letter from the chief. I'm going to get a letter from the mayor about my house possibly being boarded up, or I'm going to have to have the tenants evicted. And that's just the nuisance abatement law. People got to start reporting things as they see it. And it is, shooting is rapid. I wouldn't go on council football practice to the socials of the room that goes on in this community. I met last week with Kidwell, Chief Kidwell. We're going to have permanent cameras put down in Beckman Park. Those are the things that we have to do things in a preventive, proactive manner. I'm not going to continue, and you right, Travis, Verlaine, and I know Mr. Snipes is probably, if he haven't already coming up behind me. We have to start reporting things. And I know about Nina Epstein administration. I know about the former mayor, Chester Will Armstrong. But also, I'm also aware with what's going on, and I've talked to the mayor in Chicago, Columbus, Georgia, Jackson, Mississippi. It's an epidemic across this nation. We're dealing with gun violence. Everybody is caring. Marijuana. Come out the River Road Park. Chief, we talked about marijuana. I cannot prevent folks from smearing marijuana, and they around youth sports. So you right. Mr. Miller just challenged all of us. We have a lot of work to do. We got to pull up our sleeves, and we got a lot of work to do. But I just want to make sure. My house, I'm not no slum landlord, and the people who live at 547 South Osborne have been there over 30 years. 30 years.
We're going to, as I said, this will be talked about here after we get through some of the city business here. We'll move on to item five, roll call, City Council.
Jones.
Present.
Noble. Johnson.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Navarez.
Here.
Marzak.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Tully.
Present.
Osanga.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Malone Marshall.
Present.
Crewe.
Free up here.
13 present, one absent.
We do have a quorum. Department heads.
Kidwell.
Here.
Here.
Hyde.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Landwehr.
Present.
Sanchi.
Present.
Lopez.
Here.
Figash.
Present.
Nelson.
Feasley.
Here.
Hoffman.
Crosswell.
Brewer Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next is item six on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, August 21st, 2023? Zoom move, Mayor Curtis. We have a motion from Alderman Osanga. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall. Crewe.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays.
Minutes are approved. There are no petitions tonight. Next is item eight, Communications, 8A.
A presentation by the Kankakee Police Department introducing new officers Danielle Seacrest and Anthony Sullivan.
Chief Kidwell.
So we'll start with Danielle. Danielle and Anthony, I should say, they both just graduated from the Police Training Institute in Champaign after 16 weeks. I know they're very happy to be home. Danielle, she's from Bourbon A. She graduated from BBCHS, went on to Western Illinois University, got her bachelor's degree in law enforcement, and after she graduated, she came home and was a security guard at St. Mary's Hospital. And we hired her, so now she's a Kankakee City Police Officer. Anthony, at the old age of 21, has accomplished a lot in his life already. He's graduated from Kankakee High School. He's a member of the United States Army National Guard. He's attended Kankakee Community College, and he worked at the JCDC before he became a police officer. So we're very excited and happy for both of them, and welcome both to the Kankakee City Police Department.
Next up is item 8B.
A presentation by the Kankakee Fire Department introducing new firefighters, Lucas Gonda, Rafael Cervantes, and Drew Crump.
DC Hyde.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. It's my honor tonight to introduce the three newest members of the Kankakee Fire Department. First, we're going to start with Mr. Gonda. He comes to us from... He comes to us from Detroit Fire Protection District, where was two years, two years previous service. He is a basic operations firefighter, hazmat operations. He is an EMT basic and has completed paramedic training. You take the certification exam coming up later this month. Next is firefighter Crump. He comes to us from Braidwood and Wilmington Fire Protection Districts. I believe eight years of previous service there. He lives in Braidwood with his fiancee Amber. He's also a BOF, or Basic Operations Firefighter, hazmat ops, EMT basic, and has also completed paramedic class, waiting to do his certification testing. Last but not least, we have Rafael. He comes to us from the Moni Fire Protection District. He lives in Frankfurt, I believe seven years of service at Moni prior to here. Basic Operations Firefighter. He is an EMT basic. He has not completed the paramedic training yet, so the next available class will have him in. We're glad to have these three gentlemen with us. They'll be going to shift sometime here in September, and we look forward to having a long career with these gentlemen. Congratulations, guys.
Next is, if it is the desire of the City Council, if they would like to make a motion to combine items 8C, D, E, and F.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, combine items 8C, D, E, and F. We have a second from Alderman Malone Marshall. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays.
The motion to combine items 8C, D, E, and F is approved. Clerk Paul, can you read those into the record, please?
Yes. Item C, Bishop McNamara Catholic School is requesting permission to host the BMCS Homecoming Parade on Friday, September 15th, 2023, from 10 o'clock AM until 11 o'clock AM. Item D, the Cankey High School Student Council is requesting permission to host the KHS Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 6th, 2023, from, and we do have an amendment on the times now, good time. Okay. From 12 o'clock PM until 1:30 PM. Item E, Riverside Healthcare Foundation is requesting street closure of the 100 block of North Skyler Avenue, no intersections, to host the Riverside Samaritan Event on Thursday, September 21st, 2023, from 2 o'clock PM until 8 o'clock PM. And item F, Wendy Dalton and Elizabeth Dunbar are requesting street closure of Enos Avenue between West River Street and West Calista Street to host the first annual West Side Block Party on Saturday, September 23rd, 2023, from 11 o'clock AM until 8 o'clock PM.
There was a request that came into the clerk's office today for Cankey High School. They would like to amend the time change from 12 PM to 1:30 PM. They'd like to amend that to 1 PM to 2:30 PM. So based on that amendment, is there a motion from the City Council to approve item A, C, D, E, and F with amendment to item 8D from 1 o'clock to 2:30 PM?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Malone Marshall. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays.
Items 8C, D, E, and F are approved. Next is item nine, standing committees, 9A.
License and franchise for Thursday, June 8th, 2023.
Alderman Johnson, would you like to review the minutes for us?
Yes. So for June 8th, we had a quorum. We had no guest presence, or present. We approved the meetings from the May meeting, or minutes from the May meeting, excuse me. We took no action on our old business, and we did approve a liquor license to come to full counsel for a casino Mexican restaurant on Court Street. We had no executive session, and we adjourned at 5:42. Go to the next one.
Item 9B.
Yep. License and franchise again for Thursday, July 6th, 2023.
Alderman Johnson.
That's me. For July 6th, we had a quorum as well. We did have a guest, Angie Seraphini from Aqua. No public comments. We approved our minutes from the June meeting. Ms. Seraphini came to answer our questions and concerns. Some of those included questions on the Cobb Boulevard plant. Alderman Navarez had a resident on River Street that had some questions on some lines that were marked. There was a water main break on South Harrison around that time. Ms. Seraphini also had some information she handed out to the Alder Committee members, again, on some programs that are available for Aqua, or from Aqua for residents and careers with them. Again, we took no action on our old business. We were good to have a presentation on a smoothie shop, but they did not come. So we had no executive session, and again, we adjourned at 5:42.
Thank you, Alderman Johnson. Next, we'll move on to item 10, report of officers. At item 10A.
City of Cankey bills in the amount of $1,819,513 and 1 cent.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the City of Cankey?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's pay the bills in the amount, $1,819,513 and 1 cent.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Tully. Is there any questions or comments regarding the report of officers for the City of Cankey? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays.
Report of officers for the City of Cankey are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $281,712.05.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments regarding the Environmental Services Utility Bills? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
I by abstainance to check 81271 to Bustin Reek, check 81287 to Grosskreutz, and checks 3564, and check 1371 to Pigash Engineering, to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays.
Report of officers for the City of Cankey are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $281,712.05.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments regarding the Environmental Services Utility Bills? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 12B.
An ordinance amending Chapter 24, nuisances of the Cankey Municipal Code.
Before we go on, Ms. Landwehr, would you just like to give us a quick overview, just quickly, what we're doing here and updating some things?
Sure. This particular ordinance regarding the dumping section that we had passed a couple sessions ago, there was a section that had a shell instead of a May, and we removed the shell, added May, so that it wasn't a mandatory towing of the vehicle in any instance of a dumping situation or littering, basically, is what most of us know it as. And then there's an additional section that is being amended to eliminate a sunset clause and make sure that the ordinance does not expire, and that will apply to the entire nuisance ordinance.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage that would not interfere with the passages motion tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Marzak. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Cobb. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
13 ayes, 0 nays.
Ordinance passes. There are no appointments tonight. We'll move on to item 13, which is motions and resolutions. Item 13A.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance and execution of the proposal for the purchase of one Pierce Enforcer 100-foot ascendant aerial tower for the Cankey Fire Department between Pierce Manufacturing and the City of Cankey for the amount of $2,368,000.
I'll give a brief synopsis here, and Deputy Chief Hyde is here tonight with any additional questions. So we went out for bid. We only got one bid that came in. That was from Pierce for this. It's a very specialized piece of equipment, so that was, I guess, not unexpected, to only have one bid come in. If we pay for the, this is the bid that came at $2,368,000, which we'll see is about $568,000 over the original estimate, what the chief was thinking it would be. The cost of these have really skyrocketed. The fire truck that we had purchased a while back, probably four years ago, that used to be about $550,000, $580,000, now, like, as you saw, we proved recently here, almost $800,000 to $900,000. If we pay for it upfront, we do have a savings that we can get it down to about close to $2.1 million. And so I've been working with Commissioner LaCubal. She is looking at a couple different scenarios with some local agencies that might be able to provide the funding upfront that would give us the savings of that piece there. We feel with the allocation, and we'll talk about that right now, that we can have this paid off in five years or less, this entire truck. Typically, when we buy a vehicle like this, we usually bond out for it and pay it off over a 20-year period. Sometimes it's even been 25 years, is my understanding. We allocated, the council of the past allocated $500,000 from our ARPA money towards the purchase of this truck. There is a state-funded low-interest loan from the State Fire Marshal's Office, is that correct, DC Hyde, that Chief LaRoche and DC Hyde have applied for that would bring in $350,000. And then we had talked about it at different committees, of funding using $250,000 of the first money coming in on the cannabis to help pay off this truck in a four-year period. It'll take three to four years for this truck to be built. We won't receive it for about three to four years. So that was a thought process. That still leaves us, if you add that all up, we have about a $250,000 shortfall, or just a hair under $300,000. The thought process coming to the council is, we do have to accept this bid within the 30-day period. We don't have to have the money go out right now, today, but if we don't accept the bid, then that bid could be pulled back. We could do five years on that first $250,000 that comes in on the cannabis. We budgeted $500,000 from the cannabis money in year one. Quite frankly, we're expecting it could be much larger, but we're being very conservative with the 500. So still, within five years, at 2.1 million, we could have this truck completely paid off and no debt to the taxpayers or the city by the time the truck is delivered or within, hopefully, one year of the truck being delivered. So tonight before you is accepting the bid, the low bid that was presided at $2,368,000. Again, we believe that, we'll talk about this at the budget meeting, which will be a week from yesterday, so it'll be coming Monday, but we couldn't, we basically had to get this before, because the next city council may even be 30 days after the bid numbers came in. So there will be further discussion about how this is paid, and how council would like to pay for this, but that's the plan that we're gonna bring to the Budget Committee to discuss. And then also, Public Safety is gonna talk about it again tomorrow night also. So with that, is there a motion, accepting the resolution that would accept the bid between Pierce Manufacturing and the City of Cankey in the amount of $2,368,000? That would be the top end.
So moved, Mayor. I'll make that motion.
Everybody.
We'll go with, we have a motion from Alderman Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Questions or comments? Alderman Marzak.
I just like to say that, you know, I don't like that big of a number, but I don't think we have much choice. You know, it's four years out. My understanding, the turbo just went out on the other one, they just replaced. So we're gonna have it hopefully for four years, but, you know, if we look at it over a 20-year period, it's like $118,000 a year. And the piece of equipment will last us 20 years, but, I mean, even Acme don't like my vehicles when I'm done with them. But it's Public Safety, and I'm just, I think it's the right move far as where we're putting And the piece of equipment will last us 20 years, but, I mean, even Acme don't like my vehicles when I'm done with them. But it's public safety, and I'm just, I think it's the right move far as where we're putting the money in, you know, the cannabis, at least on this item. But I still feel that the companies are raking us over the coals in lieu of other choice language, so.
Any other comments, questions? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Ossenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. There is no need for an executive session tonight, so we'll move on to item 17, and that is silly. Council member comments. Alderman Marzak.
I guess we, you know, we heard people tonight, very loud. I was very loud in the previous administration. You know, it's good that people are getting angry because that's what it takes. But I've said all along, it's not the police that's going to solve the problem. It's not us that's going to solve the problem. But working together, you know, we always talk about this working together, but everybody left that's the loudest. You know, I'm sorry, but one of them, but, you know, the point being is, this problem is not going to be solved, you know, by the police department alone. But to say that nothing's being done, I threw my pants on it, I think, like 4:30 in the morning one night, when I heard that there were shots fired over on Elm and Eagle, and it was going across town, and it was getting closer and closer and closer, as I was watching play-by-play online. And then I heard one in custody, and that's because the police was allowed to do their job, you know. You see so many times that the police back off because they, you know, the chase policy. So this is an incident where the chase policy, it didn't matter because people are getting shot at, and the police went after them, and they recovered one suspect, one gun, and then they brought the dog out, and they recovered another suspect, and they were in a stolen vehicle. The next day, they found another gun. So that's two people that were in custody with guns and a stolen vehicle that if they were allowed to just, we're going to back off because, you know, we don't want to chase them. We don't want to chase the bad guys. But yet, we got recovered two guns, two people, and a stolen vehicle. All too often, I think, we relax on actually pursuing for fear that maybe somebody's going to get hurt. Well, people are getting hurt by the bullets that are being shot out of these guns. There was another incident a couple years back where a county, it went through Bradley, went through Bourbon A, it went through Kankakee, and I believe county got them out by the old Al Smith Building. And those were some really bad people with guns. But if we would have let them go, they'd have been out free to shoot up other houses. If anybody has the answer, I don't think there's one person on this city council that would not listen to what they have to say. But the cameras, the cameras that we've allocated money towards, those are actually helping not prevent so much, but helping to solve some of the crimes. And that's a good direction. But I, to say that nothing's being done, I think that's ridiculous.
Alderman Jones.
I'm up. You know, I'm excited, and Commissioner Snipes really, well, he hit it on the head, and I'm really, I'm happy, I'm passionate, because I'm really hearing a little bit more of the real problem. Until we deal with it in the house, you have got to get to the house. I couldn't care less who's in our office, but until we deal with these houses, with these kids, with, not just kids, y'all know I go everywhere. I was in Homewood today, and I ain't know I was a mile from a stick-up, and where I was working at today, and come to find out, the other day I was working, and this was, I believe, yesterday, I'm looking, I'm on the roof, and kids, this is truly amazing. I'm hearing this, knowing that Homewood is not an area that crime really exists. So I thought, before yesterday and now today, and I'm looking over there, and these kids couldn't have been no older than 13, 12-ish or something, and one pulls out a gun, and he's playing with the other kid. I think, are you serious? They don't see me because I'm way up on the roof, and I'm like, are you kidding me? He said, boy, if I had to hit you with this, you know. He said, boy, I'll tow you up. They laughing about it. I'm like, Homewood, kids with guns? Are you serious? I would have never believed it. Because, you know, when I go in Homewood, it's barely anything to even see. But being in Kankakee and being in my war, y'all know I'm proud of the Seven War, but I'm not a guy that's away from the smoke. I'm in it, and we understand what's going on, and I'm liking the idea that we're going to, I believe, work with, even with the county and all, thank God for you, chief, we're going to put the cameras up because it's apparent, I don't understand why the parents and the people that are allowing this and families that know this, you know, you know who's shooting your whoever. Y'all know what's going on, and I get frustrated about it because, you know, the streets talk. All of us know. But that's your family. You won't tell? I mean, so how do you want somebody else, and I'm passionate because this is crazy, and some people that even got shot won't tell because of the no-snatch policy. Are you serious? Somebody just shot you five or six times, but you won't tell? Now you want to blame who for that? This is the reality of what we're living in, and we cannot blame cops for this. You can't blame this, and I'm telling you, everybody that's got shot almost in the Seven War, whether on Dale, you know, the family, all of it, you know, and it's just amazing that, you know, and I did like the idea, we didn't hear too much blame, because truly, I don't care about that. I couldn't care less who's in what, because last I checked, it didn't make no difference. People are still dying. I'm trying to come up with a solution. I'm with that. So I don't care, because I know goodness will, if y'all want to blame all the woman Malone Marshall and all the woman, I mean, Alderman Prue for the other night, because then they were, really? I'm pretty sure she was somewhere arrested. Pretty sure he was arrested. He had nothing to do with that. Hello? So don't even come at me with that. And I know what kind of people this is. I know the people. But I understand the gangmanship, but I don't care nothing about that. Because I live in the real world, and I'm there whether I'm doing the funeral, whether I'm, you know, involved writing checks, that I don't lie to say I ain't going to do it no more, and I still do it in spite of, because you just do it. I don't know. I don't have the answer. I don't stop lying now. I just say, I ain't going to say. I just do. Because it's hurtful. We dealing with the overdose, you know, problem, fentanyl. You don't know how many people you bury with the fentanyl thing. So that's why I say, I thank God for the council, because I think we all trying. I know what we're trying to do. We are dumping money hand over fist, trying to help out, but I cannot stop grown people who's fighting over girls. And are you serious? You at my girlfriend's house, or you Facebooking me, man, are you serious? This is what I'm saying. Nobody can stop that. Who's going to stop that? You got guys right here mad with each other over nothing. Not kids, grown men. How you going to stop that? I was talking to some of my guys that's on the street, and they tell, man, y'all ain't going to do nothing with that when they at each other. You might as well just pray, preacher, and hopefully, they get over it. Because you got people 38-years-old killing each other, 20-years-old killing each other, 14. Come on now. But we got to get real, and if it's my son in there, he 25, 26, if he's living in my house, I need to check him. Hey, man, whether you selling dope, whether you shooting guns, why you carrying a gun? What you involved in, man? Are you serious? When my guy got shot the other day, man, I was kind of mad about it. I'm like, man, what you doing? Because I don't even worry about his girl, because she like a daughter to me. Man, what y'all got going? Because I'm worried about, hey, man, what did they just shot? You see what I'm saying? I'm serious about it, and I'm passionate about it, and I thank God. What I heard today, Commissioner Snipes, you hit it on the head, and whatever we got to do, everybody just keep playing with it. You want to go to martial law? Hey, look out now. I had to tell some kids that in the barber shop, y'all doing all this talking, you're going to get frisked down. Y'all want to go back to that? Because then we got to frisk all of y'all, man, because this is crazy. Everybody is, I'm telling you, nobody in the neighborhood is happy about this. So all this stuff, if people don't like the police, that's a lie. That's another big lie. I was told. I ain't heard nobody in my community that don't want the police. I'm telling you now, that's when I leave. Y'all know I believe that maroon and stuff won't have, put that ring on too much. I only think I own nothing ring. But anyway, that's why I live here, because I'm committed to it. My money is spent here and all of that, and I want us to continue to do what's right. And I believe, you know, Mayor, if you would have been stopping things and the previous chief, I'd have been mad at you, but I ain't seen nothing that we haven't asked for, we didn't get. Now, if I'm missing it somewhere, I don't miss too many meetings. I think I missed one in the last three years. But I'm serious about it. I'm passionate because I'm upset. Y'all know I love the kids. I spend the money with them. It's just a mess. But keep praying for our town. I'm not, I'm not going to give up. You know, we praying for everybody, all of our leaders. Y'all, we going to keep hanging down. Don't give up on your city, all right? We can disagree, but listen, it's still about the kids. It's about each other. It's about mama next door. Hey, don't give up. I promise you. And thank y'all also on the 23rd. I'm just excited for y'all that's coming over to be with us at our festival, all right? And also, we're praying for y'all. I pray for y'all. Every sudden, everybody, I pray for y'all, because y'all in a tough job, and y'all are really doing an excellent job. Thank y'all so much.
Alderman Prue.
I'm going to agree with Alderman Jones on one thing, and I've been saying this since I've been on city council, that until we get into the family dynamics, none of this is going to change. We can put cameras up, we can do all these things, and yes, we'll catch some of the people doing it. But that's not going to affect the families that don't have food on the table, that their kids out there selling to help them pay the rent and all the things that they're doing. So until we get into the family dynamics, none of this is going to change. The second thing is, and I know you broke protocol by letting Mr. Pace come up here and speak. I hope you're doing that for the other people, but he's mentioned that his house got shot up and all of that, so that was probably a good reason to let him speak. But what disturbed me, what he said, when he mentioned the school, that if Dr. Walters had have done something with the kids in there, then that might not have happened to his house. So I think he put some blame somewhere where he shouldn't have. And if I heard that wrong, I apologize, but I think that's what I heard. Him mentioning the school district, them doing some things that they need to do. That wasn't appropriate to me. The second thing is that my family house got shot up a couple of weeks ago. And the people that supposedly lived next door was those twins. And I can't say that they hit the whole world house. I don't know. But the bottom line is, our house got shot up. Forty-seven bullets hit that house. All right? The people in there were okay. Alderman Marshall took action, got those people out of the house, got them into a hotel and all of that. Thank God for that. I was at work, and she took that on. But the bottom line is that until we get into the family dynamics, I don't care what we spend money on, with cameras and all of that, it's not going to make a difference. It's something that Mr. Miller said that I would like to know, and I think DC gave me part of that. We just hired a whole lot of new police officers, and I don't think not one of them live in the City of Kankakee. That's a problem. Just like they said, Bradley got their police officers there, their cars in front of their houses, all of that stuff, Bourbon A, we don't have that either. And I think that needs to change, that we need our officers living in the City of Kankakee. If they see an officer around, I think a lot of that stuff will stop happening too. So we need to make those changes as well. If you spending our tax dollars, we giving you tax dollars, we just did bonds for their pension and all of that, and they don't live in our city, that's a problem. I think we need to deal with that. I think we need to change that. Because that's what's going to help our city when they see the police officer here and their cars around their houses. I don't think they'll be too quick to shoot. Thank you. That's all I got.
Can I come back, just because it's on topic point, and I, Alderman Prue, I'll agree with you. I would like to see our officers living in Kankakee. I do believe, and I'm going to ask for some help from Chief Kidwell and from Comptroller Kubal, that a lot of our new hires, I won't say, I don't want to say it's 50%, but are living in Kankakee. How many, if I can defer to you, Comptroller Kubal, do we do, I think in the last two years, we've allocated eight, seven or eight homebuyer incentives, and was at least five or five of them, police officers that took advantage and moved into the City of Kankakee, or new officers that bought a house in Kankakee?
Mayor, I would have said it was five or six as well.
Yeah. So the new, we've had, as of tonight, we probably have had, we had 22 before, we got four new, so we've had 26 new hires. I do know, as was mentioned, five or six have taken advantage of the $5,000 down payment program that the city offers to live in the City of Kankakee. Chief Kidwell, do you know how many others? I think there's, it's more than that, that are living in Kankakee of the new hires. I don't know if it's quite 50%, but would you say it's 30 to 35%?
Yeah, we've had some move back in. I mean, housing's reasonable in Kankakee. Some of our new officers are moving here. I know Anthony, who we recognized tonight, I know he lives in Kankakee, bought a house. So we do have, a lot of our young officers are moving in, but we, I know Bradley has a take-home car, so that's why you see their cars in the neighborhood, but I don't think they have a residency. I think the cars that you're seeing is the cars that allow them, because they have a take-home car. So if we had a take-home car policy, you'd see take, you'd see cars in our neighborhoods as well.
So with that, Alderman Prue, I agree with you. I would love to see, of the 26 hirers, I'd love to have all 26 who live in Kankakee, but I know Mr. Miller said it was like zero. It's not zero.
I know it's not zero, but.
Well, we can talk about, and I don't know, I know we have a policy of cars don't go home, but I've asked that question before too. Do we have people to live in the City of Kankakee? Do we allow them to take a car home? I'm not opposed to it unless there's some valid reason, the police department or somebody says we shouldn't, but, you know, do we want a car going to Mantino or Bourbon A? No. But I would say if you live in the City of Kankakee, that might mean us having to buy some additional cars, but if that's the case, I'm completely okay with living in Kankakee and having an officer take a car home so it sits in front of their house, if that's what they want.
And one last thing, and I'm not being disrespectful to the deputy chief, but I just feel also that our chief or deputy chief should live in the City of Kankakee. I just feel that way. I mean, they are the top dogs in our city, but they don't live in our city. I'm done with that.
Somebody had raised their hand. I'm sorry. Alderman Ossenga.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to agree with what Alderman Jones and Alderman Prue said. It all starts at home, and I said that for years and years and years. I was a juvenile officer for about six years in Kankakee Police Department, and you could, dealing with the juveniles that I dealt with, you could almost predict whether they're going to die or they're going to be in prison when they're young adults. And where are the parents? Where are the parents? These kids would get in trouble, and one would come, not two parents, maybe one would come. Couple of years ago, I don't want to bring up bad news here, but over by Gas and Worsch, we had a 16-year-old young man with a gun shoot and kill a 15-year-old young man with a gun at 1:00 in the morning. Now, who in this room, as I look around, that have done the right thing raising their children would ever think about picking up a gun and shooting another human being? I bet there's nobody in this room with their children would do that. Enough said. Second part of this formula is, people on the street, the shooting has taken place, they know who's doing it. They know who's doing it, but yet, they're not reaching out to the police, not reaching out to the detectives. You know, we have a crime stopper. You can call anonymously and put out information, this is the guy, and that will get to the police, be it Kankakee County or Illinois State, Bradley, Bourbon A, all of them. It goes to them. At least it gives them something to work on, to move forward with. But to just say on this community, this gentleman got, I don't know him from Adam, I wouldn't know if he liked, he got killed over the weekend. Now, people know who did it. Chief, has anybody called you? Are we making any headway? I don't know. We don't even have to, I'm not even, don't want to go there. But that's the second part of my speech here is, people have to work with the police. They're not miracle workers. The stuff you see on TV, it don't happen that way. You don't solve a murder in an hour. But they got to have something to go on if they're going to solve a murder. Thank you.
Any other Alderman comments?
Well, I just want to.
Alderman Malone Marshall.
I just want to say that we do have an increase in violence, and we all aware of that. And it moves all over the city. So I think with the cameras, they have been a help already. I know when the shooting happened on Park Avenue, the next morning, the officer was at my front door and saying someone was standing on this porch. Did they see anything? You know, so I really feel like the use of the cameras are good, but I also feel like the interaction of what happened that morning, of going door to door and asking people, do they have information, would also be very helpful, because people don't want to come out and say it. But I think if the police could come to the area, to the people in those neighborhoods and ask if they see anything, some people would tell them what they saw, because they want to speak, but they don't want to step out and speak. They want them to come to them and ask them, and they would give them some information, maybe. I'm hoping that they will. And I just want to say that that morning, at the Prue residence that got shot, the people that lived there, it was like a war zone inside that home. I had never been in a home that had been shot up. That was my first time seeing something like that personally. But, I mean, those bullet holes were so large, and you know, where you knew it was multiple bullets went through one hole, so it could have been some extensive damage to a body. And it was just a blessing that no one was killed in that home. And this is what's going on, what happened today again. So none of us are safe unless we can get some control on guns, because guns are doing the damage. Although people are holding them, they are doing the damage, and it's some serious damage being done in our community. The young men, and 3:00 in the morning, thanks to our spot shooter, our shot spotter, we were able to identify that, chief, correct?
That's correct.
So that's why, when we were saying about the shot spotter, I was like, it has helped in our community already, and I think we need to keep it. And once again, it did at least let us know that someone had been shot that morning. So those are things that we have already done, but I think we still have some work to do, and I just want to say, let's continue to work together, and let's find solutions to our gun violence, as well as the other type of violence. That's not the only type of violence that's going on here. We had a woman that was found over in, I think, the 5th Ward, was it the 5th Ward? I don't know what happened to her yet, but she was another victim of something. So I just think we have a lot of work to do, and we need to work together and get it done. Thank you.
Alderman, excuse me. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Alderman Malone Marshall's comments there. I think of all the issues that we deal with, this is the most difficult and distressing and heartbreaking. I certainly understand that it comes back to the family, but in the meantime, I don't think we can just wait for us to get into and connect with the families, and families connect with themselves. I think we need to continue investing in the type of things that we've done thus far, you know, the creation of the office.
you know, the creation of the Office of Violence Prevention in this year's budget, investing in cameras, helping residents pay for their own cameras. Those are the kind of tools that help us solve crimes when, God forbid, they happen. So I think we need to do that. I think of the neighborhood groups, those are really the kind of groups, I think, that were referred to earlier. Those are, some neighborhoods, they're active, some are not. Maybe this is, need to really try to reactivate them for a number of reasons, this being one. I do agree that the need for additional lighting is important, and that can be a benefit as well. So kind of, I think, working together, number one, and building on what we've done and making sure we continue to do that, all with the goal of trying to, you know, help reinforce the family structure and the emphasis people are getting at home and knowing this is just a terribly troublesome issue and difficult. Thank you.
Alderman Lewis.
I've been asking since 2017, how is it so easily for a child to get a gun, and how easily it available they are in the city of Kankakee? Until we can figure out or do something about how these guns are getting here so easily, I can't, I, I can't get a gun that easily. How these kids can afford them? I thought they were expensive. Obviously not, because soon as many we take off the street, it's like we got double back out there. And until we can pinpoint some type of way, I said it, I don't know, sting or whatever, I don't know what we need to do, but to me, it look like the criminals are winning. I don't know what the answer is. I agree with a lot of people, what they said here, but again, until we can get down to who's bringing these guns here, how they're getting them, nothing will change. And I see fear, anger, for kids to be that angry to, or that fearful, that they need a gun to handle whatever conflict they have, and unfortunately, everybody don't know who's doing it. I'm sure the 30-year resident who house got shot up today, I don't think she know who did that. I could be wrong. Also, people are fearful, for whatever reason, maybe lack of feel, they're not, won't be protected if they're coming forth and saying what's going on. That's something that we cannot dismiss. If I don't feel comfortable, and that could be because of the simple fact, a lot of people do not know our officers, and that goes back to, I was born and raised here, I knew the, the officers within my community. I knew who I could go to and talk to if I felt like I had some information to share with them. Until that relationship is established with the community, with the officers that live here, and just, yes, a lot of our residents feel as if our police don't care about them, because they don't live here, they're not seen here. So if I don't trust you, how can I open up to you? And also, if I don't feel protected, if I am, if I do come to you. And I agree with Alderman Malone-Marshall, I think, reaching out and talking to the people instead of waiting for them to come to you, it might be a little bit more effective, but they do not wanna do it in the open, because again, I don't wanna be the one fearful of my house being shot up next. So, yes, it has been silence about this. I am very appreciative of all the people that came and spoke about this, because it does seem like that, you know, no one is paying attention or verbalizing what is going on in this small community with guns. We have to put something in place, and I don't know what that is, but I'm willing to be a part of that solution.
Any other Alderman, other person comments? Any department head comments, and then myself and Chief Kidwell will probably take up this conversation again, but any other department head comments at this time? Deputy Chief Hyde.
Just real quick, I just wanted to announce that firefighter Jen Reardon, who worked in our Fire Prevention Division, she retired effective this past Friday after 22 years of service. She, she doesn't want any kind of recognition, she didn't wanna come up here in front of you guys, she, she's a, kind of keeps to herself, so she didn't want the recognition up here, but I just figured I'd pass it on everyone that she retired after 22 years.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Chief Kidwell, I've, I've, I've got some comments, but if you...
Yeah, I'd like to answer similar questions.
Talk about some things, in particular, I did ask, ask Chief Kidwell to talk about Friday afternoon's incident, Saturday night's or early Sunday morning's incident, and then, and he'll, he'll, he'll get into it. This is the difficult part, because everybody wants to know every single answer right now, but there's a lot of good things they're doing, but they're still in the investigation stage right now, and they can't jeopardize that investigation. Chief Kidwell.
I mean, I, I can tell you some things, as far as Friday, that shooting, 2600 Crestwood, we responded, multiple shots fired, and what a lot of people don't know is, and I'm gonna tell it tonight, the shootings were going both ways. There were shooting from the house, there were shooting going at the house. So we did a search warrant, we got a gun out of the house. The guy that was in the house, he was wanted for attempted murder, one of the guys that was shot at, we arrested him. The other, the gentleman that was actually shot, that was, that we think was shooting back, he went to the hospital, he was shot in the leg and the foot, and released shortly after. We probably recovered 40 shell casings, but I mean, we had two or three different shell casings at that scene, so. And that guy's 31-years-old, he's not a teenager, and he's firing back. So there was something going on before they arrived at that house that instigated this. We did, and I believe it or not, I mean, there are people helping us. We are getting a lot of surveillance cameras, ring cameras, people are coming forward, but it takes time to put this stuff together. I mean, we got geo fencing going on, we're trying to get cellular data, and we're trying to get ballistic data, so, I mean, a lot of times, we got a darn good idea who's done the shooting, but we can't arrest them. It's not like somebody comes up to us and says, I seen that guy shoot. A lot of these guys are masked up now, I've got intelligence, the three were masked up, I got good intelligence, but I have to identify them. So there's a lot of things, the cameras are phenomenal, they're helping us, but, I mean, we still, at the end of the day, you gotta have human intelligence, you gotta have a human witness to get some of this stuff accomplished, and that's what we're working on. It is our protocol, after a shooting, our detectives go door to door. I called Mrs. Cole this morning where the shooting was. I got every resident in that entire building that we will, we will talk to. That's our protocol, we've done it for the past 30 years. Alderman O'Singer can tell you, I mean, he was running the Bureau for a long time, that's, that's the way we work, that's how we operate, so that is always accomplished. So the shooting on Crestwood, we're investigating it, but just so you know, there was, the shooting was going back and forth. The murder on Greenwood, senseless murder, from what I know of it, shouldn't have happened, I have no idea why it happened, we're still working on it, but we do have first of interest in that also. But again, we got dated it, we got shell casings, we got dated recovery, we got geo fencing, and we've got the cellular data, so that's where we're at on that. The shooting on 700 North Park, that gentleman, thank God, he's released from the hospital, he's back home. Hopefully, we can get some more information on that, but we do have a first of interest in that, I spoke to the detective today, that was the one on Park, so I feel like we're making progress on that one. The one on 1600 East Maple, everybody had guns in that, I watched the video, everybody had guns, the guys that were shooting, the guy that was shot. So again, we're, these guys are, I mean, it's a target of opportunity, they know they're in that, that business, when they come out, they're open fire on them. It's senseless, it's, it's crazy, but it's happening. I think we recovered 30 to 40 shell casings on that scene. 700 North Harrison, where the older lady was talking about, it was crazy, I mean, there was probably 30 shell casings outside, the house was annihilated. And just so you know, ESU and James Wilped, they've worked phenomenal with me, I mean, if I need trees trimmed for cameras, Kyle and Eric from ESU and Wade, these guys have been on top of it, I had cameras moved to that spot within a couple hours, I mean, they erected them. I had cameras moved on, or Harrison, I should say, within a few hours, I mean, these guys have really worked to help us. So on top of that, in our month of August, between us and KMEG, we recovered 31 guns. While I'm talking to you guys tonight, I just, we just got another gun this month already, we've gotten six guns off the street, we're, this is September the 5th, our guys and gals are out busting their butts, trying to get these guns off the street. As far as, well, even the shooting today on Osborne, let me finish with that one, we also had intelligence based on the observation of the scene, that they were shooting back and forth there, we did a search warrant in that house, recovered a gun out of Osborne. So 5:47 is out of Osborne, we got a gun out of there, cuz we thought that it looked like they were returning fire, the way the ballistics were going, the shell casings on the deck. So it's, it's not just what's on the surface, there's, there's a lot of things that are a lot deeper that we can't always tell you right away. So that's kind of where we're at. The shell casings, obviously we want them, because we sent them off to the AT, or the, we do the NIBIN Integrated Ballistic Systems, we can try to identify, but these shells are showing up at different scenes. So, I mean, we're doing everything we can, I agree with everything you all said in here tonight, it starts at the home, I mean, when we're, these kids are in their teens, I mean, some of these shootings this weekend, you're talking 30-years-old, 31-years-old, it shouldn't happen, usually they outgrow it by then, but they're not. So, you know, and sometimes it's over, it's not over gang stuff necessarily, everybody thinks they're gang shootings, they're not all the time. I mean, sometimes it's just the social media, these guys never take a break? I mean, back in the day, before social media, you walked away, you went home, you pulled down, well, this stuff festers all night long, all day long, it never goes away, they see the, they, they can follow the guy, they know if he's at the store, these kids post where they're at, where they're going, and if somebody wants to shoot him, a lot of times they're just an easy target, so they know right where they're at. So as far as violence prevention, like today, Johnny, she was there with, our violence prevention coordinator was there, Kankakee Forgives was there, I mean, we're doing everything that we can possibly do as far as, you know, consoling the victims, trying to stay ahead of it. If I know where there's gonna be a shooting and I can get ahead of it, I do. I mean, we put the cameras out, but I need people, I mean, I actually, I, being there as many years I have, I do have a lot of people call me, but it's still, at the end of the day, I need somebody to say, yeah, I seen him pull the trigger. I mean, I know who's been the shooting, I'm getting that intel, but I gotta still have somebody, the eyewitness, or I gotta have it on the camera. So there's a lot more to it than, you know, we had a call today, wondering why we haven't made an arrest yet on Greenwood. Well, I mean, it's, it's tough, I mean, unless we're there to eyewitness and arrest the guy, we can't necessarily do that, but I just want everybody to know that our detectives, I mean, they work around the clock this weekend. We've, you know, we've, we've exhausted all the resources that we have, I've got guys out there tonight, I've got KMEG flexing their hours to help us on the street, the pop units out there, like I said, they just popped off another guy with a gun. So if there's any questions you have, I'd be delighted to answer them if I can.
Alderman Malone-Marshall.
So what are we doing as far as like the community policing, as far as the officers getting to know the people in the neighborhood? What are we doing with that? How, how are we managing that?
Well, I mean, I was at your community meeting the other night, we talked about that. And we come back from these community meetings, I know that Deputy Chief talked to the lieutenant to put it out, email, we have our staff meetings, we tell them, this is what the people want. They wanna meet you guys, if you're out in the yard walking, they want you to stop and see you. Your meeting the other night, I think it was probably one of the most eventful meetings we've had, back and forth, it was good to be there. Unfortunately, I think we all agree, the wrong people, I mean, not, not the wrong people are there, but not, there's a lot of people that should be there that aren't there, you know, we see that, you actually have a pretty good joint, but I've been to some meetings where it's me and the Aldermen standing there waiting on the crowd to show up, and they don't show up. So, I mean, you guys really feel they're doing your job, I mean, you're holding the meetings, you're hosting them, but nobody wants to show up until there's a shooting, and then everybody wants to show up, and, you know, we need them to show up when the shootings aren't happening, you know, I think, I mean, I've heard, everybody's had good advice tonight, but even when you have, somebody knows that these shootings are gonna take place, cuz it's all over social media. I know the Deputy Chief just put out a thing, we, you can, we have a tip line on our social media now, or on our webpage, if you, if you know something, you can just get on there and put it out, and, you know, we'll respond. I had, you know, one of the pop unit guys called me the other day and said, hey, I think there's gonna be some, you know, stuff going on in this area, so I call Eric and, and Kyle, and I'm trying to get cameras up there to get ahead of it. I mean, we're trying to stay ahead of it, but, you know, it's, it's just hard, because the guns are so prolific, and if they see somebody and they wanna shoot him, they do it. I mean, it's, if there's nothing, I could have a thousand cops out there sometimes, and I couldn't because somebody's shooting, it's just, you know, I think the Alderman said it tonight, it's, both of the, Alderman Prude said it too, it starts at the home, and some of these kids are beyond that right now, we're, we just have to deal with it. I don't, I don't have a good answer.
Thank you, Chief Kidwell, I just, some of the hardest things is, I, I get privileged information. I know that's frustrating that, and each of you would like some of the same information too. I just, I was a little bit cautious to speak tonight, cuz I don't wanna interfere with their investigation, I don't wanna say something wrong that they sit there and say, well, I screwed that up. I will say this, they have to get the information in order to get it to the state's attorney so that he can properly charge and take that case to court. But I would say probably nine and a half times out of 10 times, they have a pretty good idea, and they do on this past weekend, of who is the offender in this, or who they need to, who they would like to arrest right now, but they can't do that, and like I said, it's gonna take some time. I have the utmost confidence in their team that they have right now, that they're going to produce some results from some of these things that have happened over here the last weekend, the last two weeks to three weeks, because they're, but it's taking them some time to get to that point. I wanna start with this, I mean, we had a very large crowd here, I'm, I'm kinda disappointed, cuz that's why I said it after the meeting, that people didn't stick around. Some did, there's people here, but a lot walked out that door, and I made purposely a comment that we're gonna talk about this after we got done with city business, and here we are with 14, 13 council members, us up here, department heads, and six people in the crowd. So I, I guess I get a little, I'll, I'll be, you know what? That's fine, and I will sit there and say, you're right, you can point the fingers at me, you can point the fingers at us, I, I've said it before, I've been there, I've done it, you're right. Point it this way, cuz it's my job, it's your job also with your assistance, but my job to talk to them and come up with different ideas and strategies, and I think we're doing that. I heard some good ideas tonight, we'll talk about that, about what we can do to implement a few of these ideas. It was talked about getting the, you know, watch groups, or getting some, getting the public to go out and talk. That's the problem, though, we get together to talk, and we don't, we preach, we don't come up with ideas. We don't need to preach. We need to actually sit there and say, so I was actually happy to hear about some things of, we need to go door to door more, or we need to get more lighting, or we wanna take cars home, or we need to have our officers getting out of the car and walking up to the front step and saying hello, or whatever, whatever it might need. So there's some ideas that already just this part tonight, that we'll talk about and see what we can do with and everything, but I only wanna have the meetings if we're actually gonna talk about tangible things that we can do, and not just to sit there and say, this is all BS, because, and that's why, again, I wish everybody would've stayed with, that came here and talked about it. The cameras, again, the cameras are not going to stop the shootings, I've said that from day one, but I will tell you what, they are helping solve the cases tremendously. I would think of all the shootings that we've had, I was trying to think of it today with Chief Kidwell, I know that there's two major homicides, you know, triple homicide and the young 13-year-old that was shot right behind City Hall, those have not been solved, but they're still working on them, and, but most of them have all had an offender arrested, or they know who that person is, and they're still finalizing the case. A lot of that is because of the technology, but they're making sure it's accurate and that they can get a conviction out of it. So the cameras, they aren't gonna stop it, but they are going to help solve it, and that's the biggest thing and the best thing that we can do with it. And as I said, I believe they're catching the majority of people, they're doing some things, not everything, but when you're, when you're batting above 500, when you're doing, even batting above 750, you're doing a pretty good job, I think. I think our men and women of our police department are outstanding, I'll say it here, you can agree or disagree with me, we have the right men in the leadership position. I don't think there's two more respected men in the community right now than Chief Kidwell, Kidwell and Deputy Chief Austin. Deputy Chief Austin ran the Bureau for a long time, it was very, you know, you can see what happened in the last two years, a lot of those cases are getting solved, he's there, they're, they're right and left of each other and working with each other each day. I've, I've seen it, people are sitting there saying, things, things that change need to be made. Council can ask that, whatever they want, public can ask it, I think we've got the two right men there. I don't think, I know we've got the two right men there, and they are going to get to the bottom of this. There has been an uptick, you know, last year's statistics, believe it or not, were pretty good, they were, I... They were, I've talked about this at meetings and community events and stuff, that the statistics are horrible statistics, but they are trending in the right direction. And actually going into Memorial Day weekend, and I'm kind of glad I didn't, I almost posted about how great 23 was going because it was even trending even lower from 22. And then, to be honest, summer hit and it's been an absolute shitshow since Memorial Day weekend, pardon my language, but it hasn't been good. But we are going to make a change. We're getting the officers out there. We have a full-time ATF agent that is in Kankakee County now that works with us. That's a big stride that can help with getting some of these casings and everything done ahead of time. As Chief Kidwell mentioned, it's hard to measure statistics and Johnny SC's in the back and she'll tell you this, at some of the conferences we've gone to, sometimes the hardest thing is how do you judge results? And I guess the result is, how many more shootings or murders could have been? I think he said, as he said, in the last month of August, four guns were taken off the street, close to 40 guns, six since five days ago. If those guns hadn't got off the street by the officers and KMEG, how many more shootings would have occurred? And we've heard those measurable tangents, you just don't know, how do you measure success? But we're putting, as I mentioned, the guns recovered, the Office of Violence Prevention. Johnny now has another full-time person working with her, as was mentioned today. She goes out when there's a shooting, she doesn't get in the way of the officer, she goes out and asks that family, what do they need, what do the neighbors need, what can be done? Trying to get into those homes and we want to get another person into that position because they need help. That's their job, they're having community events for trying to get, what you're hoping is, can you get that one kid or those two kids to that event? We had an event 30 days ago with the water slides and slipping slides over everything, there was 50 kids there, it was phenomenal. I'm just hoping one of those kids there was maybe the one that needed to be there that today to go the right direction instead of the wrong direction. We'll never know that. We may make that change, but those are statistics that we can't measure. But I will leave it with this is, if you have an idea, the one thing I say when it comes to public safety, and you guys know me, I'm pretty frugal with money. I want to, I want to beef up our reserves, I want to pay down our debt, I want to lower our real estate taxes, but if you sit there and say that we have to spend money in a certain place to reduce public safety, I've told everybody, that's an open checkbook as far as I'm concerned because we can't be a community if we don't get our public safety handled solved. I'm open to all ideas of what we do. Alderman Prude and you kind of mentioned, I'm open to ideas of how we should probably have a sit-down meeting, all of us. What kind of money do we need to allocate to get into the homes? Because I'll be honest, I don't know if money can fix that problem, but if there's something we need to spend on it, let's do it. If that means, I'm going to say it here, if that means our tax rate has to stay the same instead of lowering, well, that means we're going to make a better community public safety wise and we'll spend the money if we need to do it. But I'm open to all of your ideas, I can mark some of these down, we'll implement them as much as we can because as was said before, we got to continue to talk about this. Each day, I talk about it each day, we're talking to police, I'm, you know, I hear about this when it happens at 2:00 or 4:00 in the morning or 6:00 in the morning, I'm up too. Trust me, I, I don't sleep over it. Sometimes I'm upset, a lot of times I'm pissed off because I'm thinking, how do you put yourself in that position? The hell are you doing at 4:00 in the morning? Sorry, but go to bed. But, the reality is, is we're here to protect all and that's what we have to do. So, I suggest, it's, it's been bad, let's, let's, let's call a special meeting, let's, hell, let's, we're not talking, I'm open to all ideas because you're right, we've got to get into the homes to make some changes. But I believe the officers, our men and women are doing everything they can and I believe they're going to, you're going to see more things come out of the, what's happened over here this summer with arrests, convictions and going forward. And that's, that's a sad part too, that we're going to arrest somebody, convict somebody and ruin their life. But the reality is, that's what we have to do to get them off the street because it is less than probably 20 people that are causing most of the problem. It's probably less than 10 people that are causing 80% of the problems. We got to get them arrested, we got to get them off the street because they're causing most of the problems. I can tell you right now what they're working on here, from this past weekend, sometimes it's the same names over and over. If we could arrest six to 10 people, we'd see a dramatic difference in the shooting. I really believe that. It's not going to stop it, it's always going to be here. I've always given the statistic that we need to get shots fired down to 250, that's a goal. And I've always said, that's a horrible goal, that we want to get our shots out, not down to zero, but I know it's never going to be zero ever again. Can we get down to 250? Can we get down to 300 shots fired? And let's hope its victims hit is zero and homicides are zero. Those are goals that we have to set forth. Is there anything else anybody would like to talk about tonight? And if not, we've got to, we've got to continue these discussions. I know we have public safety tomorrow night, we'll go over some statistics and all that too, but we can talk again tomorrow night if you come up with ideas, let's bring them up tomorrow night at public safety. And I'll talk to Chief Kidwell and Deputy Chief Austin and Comptroller, some of these things here, what we need to do, we'll figure out what we can do immediately and what we need more to do, so. All right, it's 8:35, is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Marshall, second from Alderman Marzak, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.